I don't recognize councillor O'Connor.
Thank you Mayor Clayton. I'd like to move council adopt the minutes of the city council meeting held January 27th as presented.
It's councillor O'Connor, that motion is in order. Seeing no one in the queue, I'll call the question, please vote. And that carries unanimously. Moving on to item number five, the adoption of today's agenda. Councillor Tool.
Adopt the agenda as presented. I don't think there's anything asked to be added, so.
Perfect, thanks for that motion. That motion is in order. I'll call the question, please vote. And that too carries unanimously. Moving on to the next part of our agenda is item number six, delegations. For those who are watching at home, delegations are an opportunity for you to come to speak to council. If we're having an evening session, that opportunity is available at that point as well. There is a form online that's relatively easy to fill out. You can indicate if you'd like the afternoon or the evening, assuming we're having an evening session. And then we just ask to identify what you'd like to speak about. If there are other items of business that we are addressing, delegations can speak during public hearings. But this form really is just to let us know ahead of time that you're coming to speak to council. And we encourage people to use that opportunity. We do not have any delegations today. There are no external reports that are coming forward. So I'll move on to number eight, committee business. First item of business today under standing committee business is the Public and Protective Services Committee meeting held on February 4th. I'll turn this one over to councillor Bosch for introduction.
Thank you Mayor Clayton, and good afternoon to everyone. I move that council adopt the minutes of the Public and Protective Services Committee meeting held February 4th as presented.
Thanks for that councillor Bosch. That motion is in order, so I'll call the question on that. Please vote.
Bressi in favor?
And that carries unanimously. Councillor Bosch had a couple items of business for today.
We do. We had a delegation at our committee meeting last week, the Kool-Aid Society telling us about the issues that they've been dealing with as of late. And we, do we have anybody speaking to this? We do? Okay, I'll start with Chief Glavine to introduce. Is it you? Or no, it would be Chief Lemieux. So it would be Tammy. Thank you. I know, that didn't make any sense at all, but it's working.
Sitting in for Chief Lemieux today. Go ahead Tammy, thanks.
Thank you Tammy. Good afternoon. I'm here to present on the emergency funding requests from Kool-Aid Society and to present recommendation for council consideration. So as you said, on February the 4th, Kool-Aid Society appeared as a delegation before the Public and Protective Services Committee requesting $60,000 in emergency funding to sustain operations until June 30, 30th, 2025, the end of the school year. This funding would provide the organization with the time to explore alternative funding sources and identify a long-term solution. At that same committee meeting, the motion was passed. Committee recommend council approved funding to Kool-Aid Society in the amount of up to $60,000 and a direct administration to recommend a funding source at that time. Following this, administration met with United Way Executive Director on February 6th. United Way has expressed a willingness to provide $30,000 in funding contingent on three key conditions. Council approval of $30,000 in matching funding, collaboration to establish a long-term, sustainable operation model, and appropriate recognition of United Way's support. United Way also held a one-to-one meeting with Kool-Aid Society on February 6th to discuss the funding support. Based on this, the recommendation before council today are as follows. That council approved $30,000 in funding for Kool-Aid Society from the Housing and Community Development Operational Budget. And number two, that council direct administration to collaborate with Kool-Aid Society in identifying a sustainable operation model beyond June 2025. With that, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thanks for that presentation. Oh, sorry, my apologies. Go ahead councillor Bosch.
Thank you Ms Wentz. We'll go into questions from anyone. Mayor Clayton takes that now?
Yes, thank you for that councillor Bosch. I understand, thanks for the presentation, Ms Wentz. I will now open it up for questions for administration from council. Then I understand there's a delegation here to speak in support of this, and who will take questions as well. But I'll open it up to council right now for questions. A councillor, I'll go to councillor Blackmore first.
Thank you Mayor Clayton. Ms Wentz, my understanding is, I just want this clarified, that their operations that take place during July and August are funded by the drop-in fee that they charge. So my understanding is that although this funding will get them to June 30th, they will still be in operations for July and August. And hopefully by September, we'll have secured, secure funding again to move forward. Can you assure me of that?
Ms Wentz?
Thank you for the question. I don't have those answers about July and August, but I do have Amanda here that could take that question about July and August, if, if you're open to them coming forward.
I'll get to them in a moment, and they can take those questions that administration can't answer. Perfect. Councillor, question for administration or for the delegation?
Well, I guess it could be for administration.
Try it.
Thanks Mayor Clayton. I'm just curious on the viability part of it. We kind of asked a committee, right? Asked a committee about a home for them. And has there been conversations about what part of their costs associated were to just housing the organization? Just to know if the city wasn't able to provide a spot for them in activity reception center or somewhere like that? What that would do to their overall plan? I'm just wondering if those, they talk about that and the viability of the organization moving forward yet, or if that's to come to a later date?
Ms Wentz?
Thank you for the question. Yes, that would come if council approves the recommendations today. That would be part of the sustainability conversation around, is there other options for, for Kool-Aid?
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Bressi.
Great, thank you. I, I assume that if this is approved, there's going to be further conversation about ongoing support from the city. And that's certainly something I don't think I've got appetite to do the full 20 that they've lost, but want to see something. So where, what would the city funding cycle look like? What would the process look like to consider filling in some of this funding that's been lost?
Ms Wentz?
Thank you for the question. Currently, the Kool-Aid Society is funded through the RFP FCSs city funding. Their, their next application would be for 2027. So in 2026, the applications will be live again for community operations. So at that time, they could apply for additional funding. But for, at this point, all of the money for 2026 is allocated.
Yeah, and which I guess I understand, but I'm, I guess I'm looking at, I don't know if I'm looking at the mayor or CFO or what it is, but if there was councillors that had appetite of having conversation about not waiting until 2026, what would be the process for that?
Ms Whiteway.
Thank you Mayor Clayton. I can certainly start. So we do, we have other options as well. Council of course could, out of cycle or during budget deliberations, refer additional funding if you so chose. We have our community group funding avenue as well. So that could potentially suffice too. So I think there's opportunity along the way for council to, if you so choose, to either through community group funding or it could be one-off funding. Yep.
Great, thank you.
Councillor Bosch?
Thank you Mayor Clayton. I guess my question is to either administration or Amanda when she comes up. I hear one part of this communication through United Way and their conditions, but I'm just curious on the other party and how they're, you know, feeling about this, you know, I guess, partnership with United Way. So I only hear one of, one of the two sides. So I'm sure we'll get to that today, but I'd like to hear what the Kool-Aid Society has for information for us in that regard. And then, to my understanding, they, Kool-Aid Society was looking for a path to assist their organization in itself by selling property and so forth. And this just came to mind when councillor Bressi was talking. Is some of that going to alleviate the potential for more need for funds in the future? I'm curious to, you know, the path of the organization looking after themselves? And then how much does outside organizations assist?
Ms Wentz, any comments? Or you can leave it to the delegation if you'd like?
Thank you for the question. I'm going to leave that up to Amanda, but I do know that they are looking at their assets and how that can benefit the continuation of their organization.
Right. Okay, I look forward to hearing that. Thank you.
Councillor Teason?
Thank you very much Mayor Clayton. Thanks for answering and presenting here, Ms Wentz. Just a question, at committee meeting, I believe you said, at least I have it in my notes here, that the city grants that we give to Kool-Aid is just under $95,000 a year. And my question for that is, because I'm very open to increasing operational funding, if that discussion were to come forward sometime in the future. But how much of that, are we aware how much of that is building and utilities costs? Or does any of that feed into the operational costs as well?
Ms Wentz?
Thank you for the question. All of the money that is available through that RFP process is not to go to operational funding. It's very much specific to programming cost, not to operational funding. So it's really about your staff and your audits and things like that. It's never to go to the cost of operating a facility. That's where the partnership comes in, when we're looking at FCSs mandates.
Okay, thank you.
I had a question, Ms Wentz, in regards to the announcement. So the province of Alberta through Recovery Alberta Mental Health and Addiction noticed that to the, to end the contract, the funding as of March 31st, 2025. I understand that internally, we've had some conversations with the province in addition since then. And do you have any feedback in regards to why? Do we expect this to happen to other organizations, the community? Have we seen any indication that there may be other organizations coming to us? I had a very high level, it appears that the province is more, rather than being preventative, they're looking to be, they want to be in the business of helping people recovery and put them on the path to recovery, and not as much focus on prevention. And so, do you have any additional context to that? Or any concerns of any other organizations that we might hear from in the near future that are having refunding reduced or completely removed?
Thank you for the question. Around the areas of the FCSs funding, we have not received any other notifications of any organization losing their funding. But I do agree with the statement you're making around Recovery Alberta. Anyone who's funded through that stream of funding, I can definitely speak to their moving towards the intervention versus the prevention. And I, maybe it's, we need to look at a different conversation on how we present. Because even programs like the Kool-Aid, if you actually looked at the bridge, bridging the gap between prevention and intervention, they could still fall within that category. So I don't know if it's a different conversation that we got to start having, or a different way to look at how we're talking about the programs in our community. As we all know, you know, Recovery Alberta, we're not a recovery community yet. So we do have to, to, I guess, switch our language and how we're using it, or how we're telling our story. Because we are not a recovery community at this time. So we have to remember that when the province is putting out, we're intervention versus prevention.
Hundred percent. And that's exactly what I was looking for. I think that it's, we know that preventative measures will help in regards to the needs and recovery. And I think it's extremely valuable for us to, maybe in council's conversation around advocacy, going forward, and what we talk about, the priority of prevention in addition to recovery. So, and intervention. So thank you for that. Recognizing councillor O'Connor next.
Yes, thank you very much Mayor Clayton for bringing up that point. And to Ms Wentz, thank you very much. I think it's important that we look at the whole picture and what's going forward. So I'd like to do business if you're prepared.
Sure, I'm just going to check with councillor Blackmore. Before councillor O'Connor does business, did you have a question for administration? Or can it wait till there's a motion on the floor?
It can wait, but I do have a question for administration.
Go ahead, because it's actually councillor. I'm going to give councillor O'Connor an opportunity to speak, but it would be councillor Bosch who makes the motion in understanding committee.
Well, then I'll back away then.
Okay. So go ahead councillor Blackmore.
Just in reference to your comments Mayor Clayton, about Recovery Alberta funding, recovery models, that's all well and good, but we're talking about a organization that supports children who live in less than perfect circumstances. And I'm not really sure why the province would consider that as being not fundable according to their model. Like, it's not like we have a bunch of children who are running around taking drugs. I'm really confused by that, quite frankly.
Yeah, I agree. And I think that's exactly why we should discuss it at advocacy. But I also think councillor Blackmore, possibly you can ask the delegation if they have any additional context to that sort of conversation with the province.
Sure.
Okay, thanks for that. So now go to councillor Bosch.
Did we want to have the delegation answer some of those questions first?
Sure, you could put the motion on the floor, whatever you prefer.
Whichever? They'll still come up?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll still give them a chance.
Okay, perfect. I want to make sure you have time to speak. I move the approval of $30,000 in funding for the Kool-Aid Society from the Housing and Community Development Operational Budget and direct administration to collaborate with the Kool-Aid Society in identifying a sustainable operation model beyond June 2025.
Perfect. So thank you for that.
Yeah, and thank you to United Way for stepping up.
So thank you for that, those motions councillor Bosch. We can discuss and debate those. But first I'll ask the delegation from the Kool-Aid Society, as well as if the United Way wants to come forward. And there were a few questions that council has, so come on forward. Your mics are on now. But once you get situated, if you could just introduce yourself for those who might be watching from home. And welcome.
Hi, thank you. Thank you very much for having me speak again today. My name is Amanda Breakerber. I'm the financial director for the Kool-Aid Society of Grand Prairie. I know you guys had a few questions.
Did you want to make a statement before you go?
Sure, absolutely.
Because it may answer some of the questions.
Yeah, no, no problem. Firstly, thank you again for all meeting with us last week and approving our delegation for coming. And I definitely want to thank United Way. I know I wasn't able to be live at that meeting last week due to illness, but our board members and our operations manager were able to speak. And a special thanks to Tammy for talking to us and going through everything. We have been looking at every possible solution for sustainability that we can in the last week and a half, actually 21st till now. We have listed our main asset for sale. It does have a line of credit in contention to it. We have a, a informal offer on the table effective this morning. And so everything's gone to legal for that. After the line of credit is paid out, that would give us about funds of $135,000. Again, the biggest issue that we're navigating at this point is our, we've, we've really delved into restricted funds. So every single thing that we bring in, we project allocate everything to the actual program that we do. And that's something that I've, I've put on. So for instance, when we're speaking about the FCSs funding that we receive, the $90,000, that's for our drop-in program for our youth in the evenings. And it's only allocated to the program funding for that. What Alberta Health Services processed for us was for the programming for our after-school and evening. And it was entirely focused on the mental health. So losing that entirety for programming is, is what we're really struggling with. It's not necessarily the operations, because we have the ability, we have very low costs on that. It's having the right amount of staff to do what we need to for the youth, having that prevention intervention, which we've put so much time and effort into creating for the programming, and then allocating and making sure that those programs are the best for all the youth in the family that see us. And that, losing that particular funding initiative is detrimental, just because the funding is allocated only for the program costs, nothing else. funding is allocated only for the program costs, nothing else. We've had a few board members that have looked to doing some other type of business organizations that can essentially fund a specific program. It's a six-week program, and then we can do another one. So we've looked at a few different options. Again, it's just that timing. So I'd like to answer the one question you guys had about the summer programs. At this point, we were never able to be in competition with some of the other summer programs that were around. So we've always been privately funded for a subsidy, and we top up for the youth that could not come to those programs. And last year, it was the first year that we've actually done an entirely paid summer program. And we ended up having to use $20,000 of fundraising things to bring youth that could not afford to do summer programming to that. We would absolutely love to still do summer. And again, we have zero funding for that, so that was all families pay for it. It worked out to between $8 and $30 per day per family, and we did them as weekly programs. And, and we did see inwards of 20 to 32 kids using that daily throughout the summer months. And then we would run the AHS funding program from three until nine with the drop-in from FCSS after that timeframe. So every program we run is completely independent from one another.
Okay. So that answered that question. Do you have more to say before I open it up to council, who may have questions for you?
Just that we truly appreciate everyone's help and assistance and, and looking for those. We've obviously applied to some grants, they were denied. Most of the grants on the table right now were infrastructure grants or capital asset grants, which are things that we can't use for, for what we need at this time.
All right, thanks for that. I'm going to recognize Counselor Blackmore first.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. So you did answer one of my questions about summer programming, and I can tell from what you're saying that you will do your best to make it happen, but it's not a guarantee at this point. The other question I have is the location that you've taken an offer to purchase on, offered to sale on would be your Hillcrest location, hillside location? And you, you still own your Patterson location, is that correct?
We own the building, but we lease the land from the city for a dollar. That's correct.
Yes, yes. So your operational costs there are staffing and electrical power, et cetera.
Correct.
But not, but do you have a mortgage?
We, we have a line of credit that's secured against the hillside property.
Okay. So then I, I did have the other question about how do you really interpret programming for children to be something that would fit the mental health and recovery model that the province is looking at with the focus, which seems to be very much on recovery and not necessarily on mental health? Like, I don't know if you give, if you have any idea how to proceed there.
We had that contract for a decade, so it was a contract that we had for 10 years. I did provide to council the emails and everything that, that was said back and forth. We worked really diligently with three contacts there this past year to create a, a unique program at, at Kool-Aid that was preventative and intervention built together to, to really fit to that model. We worked with other NPOs in town as well to make sure that we could bring programming to the younger groups. We saw an immediate need for age seven to about 12 and 14, needing that hybrid preventative intervention, where they are needing emotional stability, they're needing things outside of what the schools can do. The schools do something called, there's about three programs within the schools that we essentially piggybacked against that, but we brought it into a model that was fun and engaging after school, that you could do with your sports, you could do with your arts. You can, you can touch on that mental health component in a completely different way. And in all honesty, we saw zero issue. We, we had great positive feedback all the way up until November, where we were not even able to speak with AHS months and months and months at a time. So I, I, I can't fully give you information outside of that. I've been consistently seeking more answers and have been stonewalled at this time.
Okay, thank you.
I'm just gonna, my opinion is, you know, it's extremely unfortunate. I personally believe that the work that you're doing is, although it may be preventative by nature, it's, it's, it creates youth on a path so that they don't need intervention. And so it's, it's something that council, I'll bring up at the next council, at our council committee, the whole meeting, which is this Wednesday. We always review our advocacy priorities, and at that time's an opportunity for council to add other ones. So I really appreciate your information on that. I had one question, because there's no one else in the queue. Have you had an opportunity, I know this has come relatively quickly, and you've been sort of doing a lot and juggling a lot to sort of get to this position. Are there other organizations in the community that you've maybe considered to reach out to that could one-off take some certain programming so that the ask to the city overall could potentially be less?
So our programming is very unique. We, we offer something that no one else, other than the Sunrise House, the Kickstarter GP does. But our biggest, I guess, cost at this point would be that after-school program component, which outside of daycares in, in the area.
Oh, I meant you still run it.
No.
Someone else support it financially.
Yes, I, I, yeah, I understand. I was just trying to say that we, we've looked at, at kind of mirroring things that, that could happen. So we, we contacted organizations that are not other NPOs, but businesses rather, that they could essentially sponsor those six-week programs, if we will, that, that, that could alleviate some of the costs for us. And we have two of our board members that are going into meetings next week, and I have another one with one of the oilfield companies in Edmonton that was potentially going to look for it next week. But at this time, I don't have anything further than that.
So it's something that will be ongoing, in your opinion? And there are other organizations comes to mind for me, Northwestern Alberta Foundation and, and other grant opportunities that may come to fruition. So if council were to approve that $30,000 today, it would be fair to say that if the motion were to be up to, because you received other funding money along the way, that you'd be, you'd be okay, but you could continue to work on your fundraising opportunities?
We are going to avidly look and work on our fundraising opportunities. Again, the biggest thing is obtaining those larger contracts that are three-year contracts that sustain, you know, $16,000 to $20,000, and that's not programming and then that, I mean, we're already about 7% to 10% less than our employees should be paid. Those are all little things that, that we try to top up with that other fundraising. We're really trying to seek that large contract that's sustainable.
Perfect. Well, thank you for being here today. Thank you for taking questions from council. I have no other questions. I, I will give our, our friends from United Way an opportunity to come forward if they would like to, but no, not necessary. Okay, so we're good for that. Thank you so much. I'm going to now open it up. Counselor Bosch already made the motions. The motions are in your queue. Opportunity for discussion or debate with council. I would just ask that if somebody would be willing to amend the motion, and maybe Counselor Bosch could take it as a friendly amendment in regards to item number one, that it's up to $30,000. And if you don't take that as a friendly, I'm happy to make the motion and have discussion and debate over it. But it's your motion.
Well, I thought you asked somebody to do that for you.
Asking you for a friendly?
Oh, you're doing it, okay. That's fine. I thought you were asking someone to ask me that.
No.
Okay. Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with that, because I, I think the built-in security of the $30,000 is there for you if you cannot come up with the additional funding through other means. But, so either way, there is some security there for you. So yes, absolutely.
Perfect. So an opportunity for discussion and debate on the two motions that are there. I will recognize Counselor Teason first.
Thank you very much, Mayor Clayton. Just a question for administration in regards to the up to $30,000. If this motion were to have passed as is today without the amendment to the motion, when would we have, when would we be planning on cutting that check to the Kool-Aid Society?
Ms. Wenzel?
Thank you for the question. It would be just time enough for us to amend our 2025 agreement that we currently have. So we would just amend our FCSS contract with, with Kool-Aid to add in the additional money. So it can be fairly quick, it's because it would be an amendment to our contract.
So I guess, just, just a question, because I'm not overly comfortable with the up to, and it sounds like this money needs to be there right away, and so we're going to hold it until March 31st or as they need. So I, I'm not sure if that's necessarily a friendly amendment, because the request from Kool-Aid Society was a request for, you know, the cash in hand. The offer from United Way was, you know, as long as the city commits to $30,000 as well. And I have full confidence that the Kool-Aid Society will go out and get funding, but this is to ensure their future sustainability as well. I just would hate to be holding on to the purse strings when they might need to cut a check or two in the meantime. So I don't want to vote against this motion, is why I asked the question, because I, I really think the, the question and the requests are for $30,000, not, we'll try to get it, and, and if we don't get it, then we'll take your $25,000, because we only could get $5,000. So that's kind of where I sit here. I don't know, I look, look to what my other council members think too.
I'll just maybe ask a question for clarification for administration that might help. My understanding, the $30,000 that's being proposed in the motion and the $30,000 from United Way, there's not, like, there's a one-time payment that's required April 1st from Kool-Aid Society, is that correct, Ms. Wenzel, to your knowledge? This is to ongoing funding to get them to the end of the year, correct?
Thank you for the question, yes. This is to sustain them until, so if they know they get this money, then they can continue operating until the end of school year. So they will, yeah.
So there, by giving, is not, it's going to be monthly payments that arise, right? Correct?
Thank you for the question. I would assume that we would have just written the check for the.
No, I mean, their bills are basically, I would assume, monthly payments.
Yes, I would assume, yes, thank you.
Okay. Counselor Bressi?
Great, thank you. Yeah, got a few thoughts on the overall thing, but I'm concerned about the up to too. And just procedurally, I don't know if it's fair or right to take that as a friendly amendment, since this is coming, a motion coming from committee, not from Counselor Bosch. So I don't know if procedurally she should be allowed to make a friendly amendment like that. I think you should have to make that amendment.
Okay, fair enough. Okay, so we'll go back to the original motion. And I'll state my piece, if no one wants to make the motion, then the motion will stand as is. I think that the Kool-Aid Society does incredible work. They've reacted very quickly to an unfortunate circumstance that they were handed from the province. However, I think there are other organizations in the community that very much may want to support this organization. So therefore, I don't think that it hinders them at all if we were to break this into payments, even if it meant we wrote them a $15,000 check. We saw how their applications with other organizations went. And then May 1st, we wrote them another $15,000 check. This is getting them to the end of June. So I would assume that their payments aren't required all April 1st, that there is some timing there. And with that, I think there are other organizations in our community that would be very much in favor of supporting this. So that's my intent. If nobody in council, if council just wants to write a one-time check, I will support that. I think it's a great initiative that, and the work that Kool-Aid does is needed in our community. I'll recognize Counselor O'Connor.
Yeah, Mayor Clayton, I, I think it's important that if we're going to make a commitment and the support from the United Way, that we go ahead, cut the check. And if they find other funds good on them, that they need to operate and know for certain that they're moving forward. So I, I am supportive of the motion as it sits. Thank you.
Counselor Bressi?
Great, thank, thank you. Yeah, I'm excited this motion's on the table, and I'm excited the council seems interested in supporting Kool-Aid. But I'm also excited that administration has found a way to find city funding and that a community organization like the United Way has stepped up to make sure that this motion, if it passes, is not actually having an impact on taxpayers right now. And for me, that is important. I really think the Kool-Aid Society is doing fundamentally important work. And we as a community, that doesn't necessarily mean we as the city, but we as a community need to make sure that Kool-Aid survives. With my council hat on, we also have been taking on millions upon millions of dollars in provincial downloads over my time on council. And I think I'm kind of done increasing taxes in order to continue taking on things that the province should continue funding. And so for me, thank you for administration, thank you United Way, that we don't have a really tough decision to make today, that we can at least get them through the, through the school year. And I think we've got a tough conversation coming up though, because I do think that we should be doing a bit of a part of the city, not the full part, but a bit of the part of the city to give ongoing funding, a bit more than we're doing right now. But for me, that means that's, we're cutting somewhere else. We're not increasing taxes to do that. We're finding another place where we're picking up these provincial downloads, filling in, in my opinion. So that's a tough conversation we're going to have to have a couple of months from now. But for today, let's let Kool-Aid get what they need to get through the school year. And the reason I don't, I'm glad that that up to's not in here right now, is for me, this really is bridge funding, get through the school year, and I know they're going to be working their butts off, be doing some fundraising. I know there's already been some talks with the United Way about is there more that could be, that could happen there potentially well, as well? And I've talked to other community organizations that are looking at this and seeing what they could do in a very emergency situation. So for me, what I see giving this full $30,000 today is, is that lets them survive the school year, lets those other conversations be talking about not how do we make them survive, how do we help them thrive, and how do we keep them going in the long term? And so for me, I want every donation they bring in after today to be about their summer programming and about their next school year and the next school and the next school year. And I think that if we do an up to, so that they're just focused on surviving the school year, it doesn't give them the space they need to be doing that long-term fundraising they need to do. So I am glad the motion is as it is right now. I hope we don't see an amendment. And yeah, just thank you, council, for considering this request.
Counselor Blackmore?
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I am supportive of the motion. I don't mind whether it's up to or not up to. I would like to point out that the motion that came from committee was actually up to $60,000. And, you know, $30,000 of that has already been met by an outside source, thank you United Way. So I don't think that the argument that it was a motion from committee is really that material in this instant. I just believe that the work that Kool-Aid Society does is valuable to the community. I've always really admired the job they take on. I've seen the changes that it makes to children who attend those programs, and I'm fully supportive of making sure that they have a means to carry forward and a little bit of breathing space. Whether that includes the word up to or not, I don't think is material. I think that the truth that we're really looking for is that we are supportive of Kool-Aid Society and look forward to seeing our community enjoy their good work long into the future.
Thanks for your comments, Counselor Blackmore. Counselor Bosch to close. Oh, I apologize. Counselor Teason, did you have something new to add?
Yeah, just a little new something to add. I did agree with a lot of what Counselor Blackmore said, although I, I also don't, I'm glad that we're not including the up to here. I guess for me, why I'm happy it's not the up to is not just for Kool-Aid and filling their bottom lines, but it seems like it's just an easier process for us at the city as well to sign that check over for one instead of signing over multiple checks or figuring that out. And it's built in with the existing agreement, as Ms. Wenzel stated earlier. And I think this is just going to benefit Kool-Aid Society. A $30,000 check from the city is an endorsement to the good work that you do with our youth. Kool-Aid's been around since I was a kid, grade five and six, as a hillside kid going through the doors and playing on the pool tables. I'm actually quite sad to hear that you're selling that building, because I always walked by with it, and I have the memories go through those two summers that I spent a lot of time there, just hanging out, because I thought it was a cool place to hang out. I didn't know that I was poor or anything, it was just a cool place to go. So thank you so much for the service work that you do with our youth. It is valuable. And this, this check is an endorsement from the city of Grand Prairie that hopefully you can grow from and spread your roots far and wide. Thanks.
Counselor Bosch to close.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I appreciate the discussion around council table. I, I'm like Counselor Blackmore, irrelevant up to or not, the security piece is there for Kool-Aid Society. And let's keep in mind that it is not just $30,000 that the city is participating in, in this, funding for this organization. The FCS, FCSS funding up to $95,000 a year is significant too. And so this isn't the first time we're showing support. We show support yearly in, in our annual funding. So, yeah, they'll do okay. I think people will step up. We've got a lot of media over, over this last couple of weeks, a lot of social media as well, so, and I've seen some email addresses floating around for, for our MLAs and for the public to have some discussions with them. So that might start our advocacy side on, on, on this side of the table, because they know it's coming. So I look forward to everybody voting yes to this motion in front of us.
Thank you for that. So two motions in front of you, counselor. I'll call the question. That carries unanimously. Going to recognize Counselor Bressi next.
Sorry, I'm not in the queue, or if I.
You would like to declare.
Oh, sorry.
The next item.
Yes, I would like to declare a conflict of item for the next item, just I've got Just I've got interest in a property that's very close to it. There'll be impact by anything that happens over there. So I don't think it's appropriate for me to be here right now. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll give you a moment to leave the chambers, and then I'll turn it over to Counsel Bosch for introduction. All right, Counsel Bosch.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. We're going to move on to the Golden Age Center. And I'll read the motion, and then Chief Lemieux, I think, will speak to it if he needs to. I move that council direct administration to negotiate and enter into such agreement such necessary to enable the continued operation of the Golden Age Center by the Grand Prairie District Golden Age Center Society, including a 20-year operating agreement and such agreements governing construction administration deems necessary or appropriate, all of which agreement shall contain terms and conditions to the satisfaction of the city manager and the city solicitor.
All right. Thank you for that motion. That motion is in order. If council has any conversation or questions in regards to this, as this was presented at standing committee, other colleagues may have information they're looking for in order to make this decision. Chief Lemieux, I'm sure, will be happy to take your questions. Recognizing Counselor O'Toole.
Yes, thank you very much for allowing me to ask. I had a meeting with a lady the other day, and she's a member of the Golden Age Center. And she said that she's in the 70 to 75 age bracket. And there's a lot of younger people than them in that bracket that are joining. I think the minimum age there now is 50. And so the people in the older ages are getting kind of shunned to the side. And I was just wondering if we could ask a membership and their age and the numbers in the age bracket, if that's possible?
So Chief Lemieux, do you happen to have any demographics of the membership from the Golden Age Center?
I certainly don't have that information with me, but I'm sure that's information that's available to us. And I'll see if Ms. Bieberdorff has additional information to provide.
Ms. Bieberdorff, if you happen to have anything additional context?
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I don't have the exact breakdown of their membership, but I do know it's 55-plus in general. I could get the actual breakdown, but I know their target is 55-plus.
So she told me that they lowered the age to 50?
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Yes, they are looking at amending their bylaws in particular to get younger folks on their board.
Okay.
Answer your questions, Counsel O'Toole?
Yes, thank you.
All right. Seeing no one else in the queue for discussion or debate, I'll call the question. I apologize. Can you hold that? Counsel Blackmore, I missed your hand. So before, I will pull that back, give Counsel Blackmore an opportunity in case she had a question for administration.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I do have a question, but it won't affect the vote one way or the other. But my question is...
Go ahead, yep.
Parking is a bit of a, a bit non-existent around that building. I'm wondering if, in addition to their future development or expansion of the building, they've worked or talked to our planning people at all about possible solutions for parking? I have no idea how they could do that, but I think it's an important discussion to have.
Chief Lemieux or Ms. Bieberdorff, anybody? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. We have had that conversation. We've already started talking about alternatives and potentially using the parking lot just to the west down in the park. And there's a path that leads up to the building. So we have been talking to them about other options.
Perfect.
Thank you.
I now also have Counsel O'Connor in the queue.
Yes, I think that's an admirable point that Counselor Blackmore has brought up. However, walking from the thing as a senior, coming up from the parking lot below, I think is not an ideal situation. So I was just wondering, is there a possibility of taking some of the park away and adding parking at the, on the other side to the south of the building? And I don't think that would affect the park very much. I don't know what the regulations are. Is there a possibility of taking a look at that and putting parking a lot closer to the building and not have them walk up from the bottom?
I guess I'll just say I don't see anybody jumping in the queue. Anything's a possibility, Counsel O'Connor. If you'd like to bring it forward to an appropriate standing committee for consideration and discussion, or possibly write Chief Lemieux an email, he can respond to us, and then you can decide what you want to do with that information.
Yes, as I do not sit on that particular committee...
You don't have to be on the committee to bring forward an item to the agenda.
Okay, well, I will do that and send somebody. So I think it's worth a discussion. Thank you.
Perfect. Only because I don't think anybody here has information for you today to say whether or not that's possible. Counsel Blackmore.
No, I'm done.
Okay, thank you. Counsel O'Toole.
Yeah, there's a song about tearing down the park to build the parking lot. So I think you can look back in the '70s, and it's there. But no, the concern that this lady also had was there's a lot of people that have walkers, canes, and stuff like that. And the parking lot that's available is usually filled up, and they can't use the park as an access to get to the facility. So that's a concern. She doesn't know the answer, but I wanted you to know that there's a concern there. Thank you.
All right. So now I see no one else in the queue. Unless Counsel Bosch wishes to close, otherwise I'll call the question. Thank you so much. Please vote. And that carries unanimously. I'll give, if somebody could grab Counsel Bressi, Counsel Plot, do you mind grabbing him? And I'll get Counsel Bosch to go through her meeting highlights.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. As you can see, we spent a lot of time on the two very items that we discussed tonight. So I'll just speak briefly to Chief Lemieux's update. Service officer presented committee with the update to the current and projected activities of enforcement services. They are assisting with roadways to remain clear and accessible for parking during the current snow bans that we've had. We've had mobile outreach in Q4. Case workers received 53 referrals and supported 82 unique individuals, connecting them with essential resources to be eligible for housing services. Forty-eight individuals were connected to financial assistance. Four individuals were assisted by obtaining identification. Eight with relocation supports. And 17 were referred to the hub table for connections with housing supports. We had some information from the RCMP about the plainclothes support, the general investigation section, special investigation section, drug section, and crime reduction unit. So that is also online for others to see. The South Peace Volleyball Club's Meerkat Classic took, taken place January 24th to 26th at the East Link Center, along with five additional venues across the city. There was over 97 club teams, including 55 from outside our region, representing Alberta, B.C., and the Territories. So fantastic tournament for roughly about 1,500 athletes, coaches, and spectators. And then finally, an evening drop-in for pickleball has been added on Wednesdays from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. at the Activity and Reception Center. So that is awesome. Pickleball is huge here. And the Polar Plunge is taking place February 28th, and it'll raise funds for the Special Olympics. And just know that you can also pay not to jump in. So that's the part I'll be doing. Thank you.
Thanks for your report, Counsel Bosch. Moving on to item 8.2, the Operational Services Committee meeting held February 4th. And I'll turn this one over to Counsel Plot for introduction.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. I would just make a motion that council adopt the minutes from the operational services committee meeting held February 4th as presented.
Thanks for that. That motion is in order. Seeing no one in the queue, I'll call the question. Please vote. Counsel Bosch, we're missing you.
Sorry.
And Tison, too.
Just came up.
That's okay. It's all right. That carries unanimously. Counsel Plot, you had a couple of items of business today.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. Just basically some housekeeping items as the cities went through a little bit of reorgs. We had, we're happy to appoint or make, council make a motion to appoint Ellison Downey as a development officer to exercise development permitting powers, duties, and functions on behalf of the city. And again, this is a bit of a housekeeping item and excited to see this go forward as Ellison's been a longstanding city employee as well.
All right. Thanks for that motion, Counselor Plot. That motion is in order. Seeing no one in the queue, I'll call the question. Counsel Bressi. There we go. That carries unanimously. Counsel Plot, your next item of business tonight.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. Similar to the last one, I'd make a motion that council appoint Ashley Coulter as a subdivision authority officer to exercise subdivision powers, duties, and functions on behalf of the city of Grand Prairie.
Perfect. Thank you for that. That motion is in order. Seeing no one in the queue, I'll call the question. Please vote and press submit. That carries unanimously. Sorry, I can't help myself. Counselor Plot, any highlights from your meeting?
That was most of the business that arose, but we did have some service area updates from Chief Glavine. So I'd just like to point out Engineering and Transportation Services have now posted RFPs for Mission Estate Stormwater Rehabilitation and RFT for the Road Rehabilitation Phase 2. The following have now closed. RFP for the Bear Creek River Control Structural Annual Regulatory Inspections and Crystal Lake Tree Planting Projects. Under Fleet Management, administration is collaborating with carriers to bring on the Registered Apprenticeship Program. Students who are interested in working towards becoming a heavy-duty, heavy equipment technician, the goal is to have a student in place in early March. And I actually really want to thank him in for that one. It's a, I think it's a great project for us to be working towards. And that's my report.
Thank you for that, Counsel Plot. Moving on to item 8.3, the Financial Administration Committee meeting also held on February 4th. I will turn this one over to... He is online. Counsel Berg, if you wanted to introduce this, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Clayton. I would like council to adopt the minutes of the Financial and Administrative Services Committee meeting held February 4th as presented.
Thank you for that motion. That motion is in order. I'll call the question. Please vote. And that carries unanimously. Any highlights from your meeting, Counsel Berg?
Yeah, Mayor Clayton, just let me pull it up here. Taxation and assessment. Assessment notices were mailed out on January 24th. The deadline to appeal is April 2nd. And if property owners did not receive their notice within the next week or have questions regarding their assessment, they can contact the Assessment and Taxation Department with the city. Financial management. Administration continues to focus on year-end procedures, which are progressing on schedule. Procurement and supply chain management. The following bids are currently on the market: Supply and delivery of red shale, vehicle rentals for seasonal operation, aerial mosquito control, road rehab, Phase 2 storm rehabilitation and Mission Heights, and asphalt paver. And then under geotechnical services, work continues on the network upgrade requirements at the East Link Center. And GPS integration for snow removal equipment was something that we discussed and decided to move on from. And that's my report.
All right. Thanks for that, Counsel Berg. I'll move on to item 8.4, the Investment and Strategy Committee meeting held on February 4th. And I'll turn this one over to Counsel Bressi.
Great, thank you, Mayor Clayton. I would move the council accept the minutes of the February 4th, 2025 Investment Strategy Committee meeting as presented.
Thank you for that, Counsel Bressi. That motion is in order. Call the question.
Bressi's in favor.
And that carries unanimously. Couple items of business tonight, Counsel Bressi.
Thank you. I would move the council receive the annual 2024 incoming report, grant report as presented. Just speak this really quickly. This is a report about what grants the city applied for, which ones we were successful in obtaining, and which ones we're still waiting to hear back from. There really has been work over the last year or so. We've hired a grant coordinator, and there's been work over the last year or so to really maximize all potential opportunities to get funding from external sources. These aren't just government grants. They're also grants to various associations and to private companies as well that run those programs. And it does look like we are being successful. We're definitely successful in applying for more money. And I assume that will translate to better results getting money, although it's hard to say because we still are waiting to hear back from a whole bunch of grants. Also, some work is being done to better coordinate grant money, though. So instead of just departments applying for any money they can get, we're being more strategic about looking at grants, figuring out what are projects that we would, that match priorities of council or that would have had to be funded through tax dollars instead of grants. So definitely a more strategic approach to grant applications, which I really appreciate seeing. So thank you to administration for the awesome work that's gone into streamlining these processes.
Counsel Bressi. I would look for business arising.
Well, I already made the motion.
You did? Thank you for that. Call the question. Counsel Berg, how do you vote? Oh, I lost Counsel Berg. So we will go at the eight. Okay, perfect. Thanks for that. That carries unanimously. And your next item of business, Counsel Bressi.
And I would move the council receive the 2024 Municipal Census Demographics Report for information. And I will attempt to use less than 70,385 words for that, although that is now what we know our population of the city of Grand Prairie is. To speak really briefly to this, the census was important work. So it gives us a better idea of who's in the city, what age they are, do they own their home or not, et cetera, which does help not just us, but other organizations to make decisions. But even more significantly to me, there are grant fundings that are tied to per capita numbers. And now we get to use this census, which is higher than the last federal census. So the fact that we completed the census means that we'll be, we're going to get an estimated $700,000 to $900,000 more per year until the next federal census. And so this really was important work that happened, not just for the information, but it's directly tied to more money for the city, which means we don't have to charge as much taxes to deliver the services we're delivering. So thank you to everybody that was part of this.
Thanks for that, Counsel Bressi. Seeing no one else... Oh, Counsel Tison, my apologies.
Well, thank you very much, Mayor Clayton. I had a good read this weekend over the municipal census. I had a good read this weekend over the municipal census, and I have to say, that was probably the best presentation of a census report I have read in my entire time on city council. Now, granted, I've only done four of them, because we used to do them every two years, but then we went to every four years. But this, I think administration should pat themselves on the back, because this is not just great information for us councillors to know, or for the province or the federal government to know. It's good for any prospective councillors that might want to be running in the next municipal election. It's also good when we're going out there and selling Grand Prairie to people who might have interest in purchasing and developing properties out this way. So I really want to commend administration for like a 10-star project, I'll call it, because it was, it's really good, and I'm still, I'm still finding new stuff. Thanks.
Thanks for that, councillor Teason. Seeing no one else, I'll call the question. And that carries unanimously. Moving on to the highlights from your meeting, councillor Bressi.
Yeah, thank you. Just two items of information from the Director's Report that I found interesting was, number one, highlighting to our residents that election information is now online. There's things that you can know as a general voter already up there, but more importantly, if you're considering running for council, there's really good information online, so please do check that out. And we also got a report on the Physician Appreciation Event that was hosted during the Grand North Winter Fest. We had 75 physicians show up to that and get to appreciate, get to enjoy some thanks, get to enjoy some networking, and that really is just part of our efforts to help this community have, be well-served by physicians. So thank you to everybody that was part of helping that event be a success.
Thanks for your update, councillor Bressi. So moving on to today's agenda, there are no items of correspondence, there was no delegation business, there are no notices of motion, so I am going to go to councillor member roundtable, and I'll start with councillor Blackmore.
Well, thank you, Mayor Clayton. I really have nothing to report. I had foot surgery two weeks ago, so I've been doing absolutely nothing except icing my foot and holding it in the air. And apparently I shall continue to stay off my foot for the next four weeks, but I'll be a little bit more free in getting around. But yeah, not a bad surgery, but you know, not a great time either.
All right. Thanks for that update on your health, councillor Blackmore. Stay healthy, stay warm, and try not to be slipping around on that ice sets out there. I'll turn it over to councillor Bressi next.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. A few events that I got to attend is, I got to go to the Police Commission Policy Governance Committee. I'm now chairing that committee, and we're in the midst of, we had to really quickly approve a policy manual for the commission, because we were standing up, and now we're in a place where we get to really go through each policy with a fine-tooth comb to make sure that the commission is doing things in a way that really is going to serve this committee well, this community well. And so I always look forward to those meetings. I got to attend the Grand Prairie Regional Tourism Association Open House, and that association does have a new executive director, and they've got a board that's really energized right now, and I think they're doing some really fun work to kind of re-energize themselves and really show off what's going on in this region, and get more people to come to this region to visit, which is great, because they spend, if they visit, they spend money here, but that's also how we get residents here in the long term, and new business here in the long term. So it was great to hear a little bit more about what they were doing. And then I also got to attend an Alberta municipalities board meeting, and those are always, it's always great to hear what's going on across the province and get to be part of helping advocate for the good of all municipalities, so I always appreciate those times.
Thanks for that, councillor Bressi. I'm going to switch this up, and I'm going to go to councillor Teason next.
Uh-huh. I already knew you were going to do that.
Oh, come on!
Yeah, well, usually when you switch it up and you go over there, you easily rebound back here, but that's fine. No, I had a good busy couple of weeks. It was a little slower last week than it was the week before, but some good work done. On January 30th and 31st, had two days of strategic planning with Grand Spirit Foundation, which one of the first fundamental questions that we sat down with our facilitator was, are we doing this, are we refreshing the strategic plan, or are we setting the course and the business plan for the next Grand Spirit Board that could sit here? And in knowing that most of us are all running in the next election, but no one has a guarantee that we'll be back based off of appointments, based off of elections, we decided to do all that work to give a guiding light to the next Grand Spirit Board that would come on. And there was lots of great discussions I ever had there, and I can't wait to see what the final product comes back and looks like, and I will definitely share that with council here. I also took part in a Ways and Knowing presentation at Northwest Polytechnic at the Douglas J. Cardinal leader, featuring Senator Patti Labakan Benson, speaking of her ways of knowing on how, how people, the Métis people, First Nations, how they can rise through resilience, reconciliation, and healing. There was a lot of stories about her senator work and her work with First Nations people and her own discovery. And I was fortunate enough to, by asking the first question, I got, I got a graphic novel that Senator Labakan Benson had done herself. I know councillor O'Connor wanted it, but it's called The Outside Circle, and I ended up giving it to one of the younger participants that were there and ordering it. So I'm waiting for my actual copy to come in the mail. I got it from the publisher. I didn't order it from Amazon. It's my own thing. Anyways, I also took part in Literacy Week. Oh my goodness, so many smiling, happy faces. I know other members of council took part, too. Councillor O'Connor even called me greedy at one of the schools, because I had five classes to his four. Oh, I'm so greedy. I just got there first. But anyways, it was a great time, and I want to really thank the students in the school districts for encouraging their kids to read, because we know that literacy is, you know, the tool that'll keep you learning whatever you need to learn in the future, today, and forward. So thank you to Avondale School, Riverstone School, Ivy Macklin, Alexander Forbes, and Isabel Campbell for hosting me as one of them, and I got to do a couple of Grade VI municipal government presentations. Finally, I got my last municipal government presentation of the week. I stepped into lifelong learnings. I call it the Ukrainia Mania class, because it's always a good time with lots of laughs. Incoming refugees from Ukraine, learning how to speak English, and learning all about government here. So I think that's always a great time, and if ever any other member of council gets asked to participate there, I fully encourage it, because it gives us a great opportunity to talk about the cool programs that we offer to refugees and immigrants here, like our RAP program, like GP Grays, and the Free Transit for Kids Under 17. So it's been a great couple of weeks, and I look forward to the next two. Thanks.
Thanks for that, councillor O'Toole.
Thank you very much, Mayor Clayton. I get my tongue working here. So just letting you know, I paid for my phones, got them all paid for. Two days later, everything on my phone went blank. I got it fixed, and then my upgrade come, and I don't know how many emails I sent you, but I didn't. The computer did it, so I apologize.
From administration, there's about 96 calendar changes that you sent out with your new, new phone, so.
I got 1,400.
Every calendar invite you ever had since having your email of K O Toole went to administration, but that's okay?
Yeah, no, I heard about it.
You were thinking of them.
I had 1,472 emails that I were misread, they're not read. So I will tell you, I will talk about the frank, the speaking at the schools, reading to them. I attended Riverstone, I attended Equal St. Gerard, and I did the Francophone School on the, what's the name of the other one? O'Brien.
O'Brien.
And every one of them was a wonderful class, got good.
Roy Bickle or St. Catharines, one of those?
No, the French.
Oh, Oco Nual.
French.
Yeah.
Francophone Nual, yeah. Anyhow, good response. They wanted me to speak French, and I'm just not feeling comfortable with that at this point in time, because I know they're critics. If they're anything like my grandchildren, they're critics. So I decided.
They're a welcoming group of students.
They are, and they were very good. I just didn't want to have any flaws and have them point them out, that's all. And so, yeah, and I did attend the Friendship Centre speaker with the senators. So those are the ones that I do remember, and I had written down on paper, and so let that be a thing to remember. Don't trust your electronics, you should have a backup copy on paper. And with that, that's my report.
All right. Thanks for your report, councillor O'Toole. Councillor Bosch?
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I was curious where you were going with that whole story. Okay. Finally came around. Awesome. I attended with majority of our council, the Hydrogen Foundation Study Workshop. That was really interesting to see where the potential of hydrogen in our region could go, so happy to attend that. I also attended the, the Regional Tourism Mixer, and quite honestly, whether we get more tourists from the south, because it'll potentially be cheap to come up to Alberta, to Canada, or the other side of it is we decide to stay and do local tourism. So either way, I think tourism's okay. Everybody else, not so sure. I also attended my first Nighthawk Committee meeting, and it was a long meeting, but you know, they are off to a great start, and they do so much there. Earlier start than, than last year for this year. I'd like to say that they are still looking for part-time workers, particularly with ski instruction. So if you know anybody who would like to become a ski instructor or go back to it, they need your help. They've started to do a little bit more on Google and social media in regards to getting more videos out there, and so they're getting some five-star reviews, so that's great for this region. And the ski patrol involvement is up to about, is, has increased as well, not the instructors in ski patrol. They're up to about 82 lessons a day at times, so not quite up to the pre-pandemic numbers, but it's gradually getting up there, so happy to hear that. What I thought was really interesting is, they book about 35 different schools in the region. So, you know, as far as Grand Cache, Fox Creek, Dawson Groups, like, I didn't know how far their reach was, but it's, it's pretty fantastic. And the Luge Club programming is the only one in Alberta. So it was, it was quite a lesson for me to hear how much impact they have in our, in our region, in our community. They participated with the Winter Tryout Day, about 120 kids came to try some skiing. I'll put a plug in there for them for their corporate and birthday parties and private hall rentals as well. On February 8th, they had the Chili Willie event, and yeah, anything to do with colds, similar to the plunge, I did not attend, but they had, they had a fair amount of people there. What else? Bike park planning and, you know, some of the summer stuff coming up, too. So yeah, they're, they're busy, busy group there, and it was a pleasure to hear what they've been up to. So that's my report.
Thanks for that, councillor Bosch. Appreciate that. Councillor O'Connor?
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. It's so great to hear all the great stories from everyone. So Reading Week was totally a pleasure. I read to anywhere from grades one, two, three, four, five, six, and did Dr. Seuss's One Fish, Two Fish, Three Fish, Blue Fish. Well, I, whatever. Anyway. Anyway, the, the kids had never heard anyone say it the way I did, so they just all cheered, and it was great. And did Avondale, Riverstone, Ivy Macklin, Isabel Campbell, and the Grand Prairie Public Library, and it was, okay. Blue fish, red fish, whatever. And then I also saw Senator Patti Labakan, and her message was very inspiring of how we reach and have healing circles in our communities, and really wanted us to promote that as a community. And then I had my orientation, I had the Canadian, sorry, the City Advisory Board on homelessness, and that was great. And hearts go out to the Stokes family as we lost a fellow councillor, had two-year term, two terms on council, and hearts go out to Wally Stokes' family. Thank you.
Thanks for that, councillor O'Connor. Councillor Plot?
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. I also did Literacy Week, and it is quite fun. I only had the opportunity to do one school, did a couple of classes at Ivy Lake, but they weren't too critical on me, they were really good, well-behaved kids. So the Reading Week was a success, as always, and I've always appreciated the teachers reaching out, and they've been doing a great job of setting us up so we have that opportunity. I had my first, my downtown association meeting, where we discussed ratifying the new three-year contract for the flowers. We got some updates on our marketing and our gift card programs, which is interesting to start learning how that affects all of downtown. And what was exciting, probably the most exciting conversation was, you know, discussing who the downtown of the year and the Art-A-Led Awards could be for this year, and just reminding everybody that there's an AGM on February 26th, and at that point, we'll be announcing the winners for those recipients for those awards. And I also wanted to just pass forward from the Filipino, so there's an event on March 1st through our Ethnocultural Evening with the Flavors of the World. This one's featuring on the Filipino culture on March 1st. It's a cooking class from 3 till 5, dinner at 5, and a show at 6. And that's brought to us by our, why am I forgetting the partnership? No, jeez, that's terrible. The Immigration Partnership, that I'm also just got put on as my first term as a committee, or first time as a councillor, and that's my report.
Thanks for that, councillor Plot. Just a couple of things. I wanted to mention that I had the opportunity to attend the International Council Shopping Centers Conference, where InvestGP has a booth. They share new information in regards to our demographics and opportunities for investment. But also, for me, I had meetings at that conference with potential investors in the hospitality and hotel business, as well as retail and restaurants, and a lot of interest in regards to multifamily around our community. So it was a very busy couple of days, but definitely the buzz about Grand Prairie and what's happening here. Future development in the MD of Greenview was a topic of conversation, and councillor Plot and I definitely felt like we were the focus of, of this year's conference, so it was a great opportunity to support InvestGP at their attendance there this year. Also, like some of my colleagues, attended Senator Patti Labakan, Benson's session on the Ways of Knowing, but also earlier in the day, had the privilege of attending a pipe ceremony with her, which was a very nice ceremony, right in Northwest Polytech. I also that similar, that same day, attended a similar event in regards to bringing the community together. It was an open house for industry, where there was industry leaders from across our region coming to the institution to hear from President Shane and, and work that they are doing to support industry and trades. As some of my colleagues, Literacy Week was a really fun-filled day. I read to seven schools in one day, and can tell you that it was extremely busy, but it was so fun. I, I read a different book at each school, and the takeaway for me that day is that one of the youth asked me to sign his hat, and the one asked me to sign his coat, but I didn't think his mom would love that, so I didn't. But he got me to sign his hat beside an Euler signature, so I don't know which Euler it was, but I'm right there on the brim with this Euler, and yeah, I was pretty, hopefully I didn't ruin the value of that hat. But anyways, it was, it was a great week. Love Literacy Week and see the passion with the youth in our community, and great questions about things that we're doing. The teachers, in my opinion, were really good at framing it around what's possible in the future, with potential data center and the expansion of education with Northwest Polytech. So the teachers were really good at incorporating what's happening in the city, on how these youths should really pivot their thinking in regards to future employment. Had the privilege with Reeve Marshall to read the proclamation for Black History Month. It is February, it takes place the entire month, but we kicked it off on February 1st. There is an event at the end of the month, if you're interested. But we also had a opening ceremony, which was really educational and an opportunity for us to get to know more of our community, and the work that they're going to be doing in celebrating, not only celebrating, but educating our community over the next month. I had a interview for my council colleagues, just some information. The work that we're doing with our doctor recruitment initiatives and attraction and recruitment seems to be still a very popular topic of conversation. I did a CBC Morning Show a couple of weeks ago on that, and people are really admiring the work that we're doing. So kudos to my colleagues for having the foresight and, and supporting the initiatives that InvestGP is doing in partnership with Alberta Health Services in attracting and recruiting physicians in our community. I was invited to speak on behalf of council at the Water, Earth, Innovation, Aqua Terra Conference. It was the first time I actually was a keynote speaker, where I was given an hour time slot to speak. None of my friends or colleagues will be surprised, I filled the hour, I had lost to say, but it was a, it was a good 40-minute speech on the work that we've been doing this term, as well as an opportunity for questions, and so thank you to Aqua Terra for inviting me to that conference. And then on February 5th, I participated in Winter Walk Day. It's an annual event where people are encouraged to get outside, 15 minutes of walking, and to celebrate and embrace winter, but also just to talk about mental health and recreation, healthy activities, and how they're all intertwined across our province. And thanks to councillor O'Connor for mentioning Wally Stokes, as mentioned, a friend through Rotary, but somebody who's served our city, and he will be dearly missed, and I could send condolences to his family. With that, I will thank you for your time, and we'll see you again soon. Call this meeting adjourned. Goodbye.